We are ready, go ahead.
October third, twenty twenty-two, Select Board Meeting, this meeting is being recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Thomas Southwick, October third, twenty twenty-two. Begin by saying who's here, Chairman Russell S. Fox, myself, Vice Chairman Doug Mogul, Clerk Jason Perron, we have Chief Administrative Officer Carl J. Steinhardt on Zoom, and we have Administrative Assistant Robin Solak here. Before, again, if everybody could rise so we can do the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Mogul, you start us off tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first thing on the agenda is public comments, it gives anybody an opportunity that'd like to make a statement to the Select Board, this is your opportunity. I ask anybody in the room to please stand and state your name and address, and anybody on Zoom if they could please state their name and address. Is there anybody in this room at this time? I see heads shaking, no. So we're gonna go to Zoom, is there anybody on Zoom? Anybody putting their hand up, Mr. Mogul?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then if not, we are going right to acknowledge payroll warrant number two, three, zero, eight, dated nine, twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, and the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty dollars and seventy-five cents. Need a motion to accept the minutes dated nine, twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, executive session minutes dated nine, twenty-six, twenty-two, you have them in front of you. The motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those as amended, I just have one minor correction.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, if you could pass those back, and you're gonna, yeah, that amendment. Okay. Okay, we're going on to fix our action forward. The first thing is to approve a sick bank leave, sick leave bank request from C. Bedore for a thirty-day extension, and he submitted a, a letter here to the board. This is something that we've done in the past, did everybody get a copy of that or no?
Yeah, I, I have the medical information in a separate file, so that doesn't come before you.
Okay. Uh, I mean, you certainly want to help out, Harry's a good person and a very good worker. We wish him the best of luck and to get better, so I need a motion to approve that extension.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, uh, next thing is acknowledge a thank you from retiring Fire Chief Anderson. Uh, Mr. Mogul, I don't have my glasses on, could you kindly read that for me, please?
I knew what you were gonna do.
Word for word, please.
Penmanship's horrible, what are they teaching those schools? Oh, thank you for all your kind words in hosting my retirement party, it has been an honor to work with all of you, Chief Anderson. P.S., go class of seventy-five.
Is that the class of nineteen-seventy-five of Southwick High School, the greatest class that ever graduated from Southwick High?
Well, that's like the fourth or fifth retirement party from the class of seventy-five.
All right.
I know I'm young.
Moving right along, moving right along. Uh, next we have a, a letter from, uh, Chief Landis, and we have Chief Landis here, so if you'd like to come up to the table, because you are making a request. I'm gonna let you explain the request.
So here, we've had some prior discussion regarding some of our staffing shortages and challenges with the police reform bill. What I'm looking, because we have two officers out long-term, um, this request in that week, I'm taking one of our reserve officers, Kelly Yatkin, appoint her full-time position, um, at least offer her, you know, that, and, um, she would be the quickest track that we would have to put somebody back on the street, she's, um, was certified in the state of Ohio, she worked there full-time for two years prior to us hiring her as a part-timer, so we've already been bringing her up to speed to master requirements, we did get a letter of exemption, she will not have to go to a full-time police academy, so, um, well, once she has her child this month, um, and she gets squared away from there with her health and her personal life, she would like her to assume a full-time position here, so I think she's probably in our best interest to, and opportunities is, is, is here, so that's what brings me here tonight.
Right, and she had a very positive interview when we.
That was a no-brainer that night.
Absolutely, very impressive woman, so.
U.S. Olympian.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
Doesn't hurt.
Right, uh, discussion?
None, I actually was at the meeting even though I wasn't on the Select Board, so, well, there.
You looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
Uh, I will make a motion to extend an offer of, conditional offer of employment to Kelly Jacob.
And I will second that motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you. You got it, Keith, all right, all right, anything else?
Well, that's, I guess, up to you, um, I don't know if you needed me for executive session on anything, I think we've covered it, but I noticed some North Pond stuff.
Nope, I, I think we're all set, all set, thank you very much, thank you.
Good night.
See you, chief.
Good night. Good night, chief.
Bye, girl.
All right, okay, uh, the next thing is to approve a contract, uh, to authorize the chairman to execute with Eric Kinsfer, C. for the town treasure collector clerk office function split study and recommendations. This is something that we've kicked around over the years, and, uh, I think push has finally come to shove. Uh, this would be a charge of five thousand dollars. The C.A.O. has been working, uh, with Eric, uh, to get a proposal, Carl, you wanna chime in?
Uh, sure, I mean, this, don't forget, we, we have discussed this over the last number of years, and then this was brought up again as a subject matter at the August meeting with Michelle and Jess about the root, the importance and the need to study the splitting of the positions. And of course, now that we, you know, Jess has moved on to a different opportunity in a larger municipality with, you know, better benefits and more money, now is the time to start examining this option, and, uh, Mr. Kinsfer has worked with us, he helped us do transition in the accounting office, and he also worked with us on the community compact grant uh, projects for capital planning and for, um, revenue forecasting and expenditures. So, and this is something that our normal outside auditor, uh, cannot do this type of a function for us, it has to be done by another third party. So, we're at that crossroads, uh, folks, and we need to start looking at this, and along with, uh, the research being done by myself and town council for, and the Mass Department of Revenue from the legal points of view of what votes will be necessary and approvals.
And I think you should also mention that, uh, uh, things have changed in government throughout the Commonwealth, and we're one of the last, uh, to have these combined offices.
I, I think.
Community of our size.
Yeah, Michelle had raised that point, in fact, one of the examples of a special act I'm looking at for the splitting of the offices that were combined is I think up in Deerfield, and they're going through the process through their legislature to, uh, to do the split also. And they're, they're a smaller community than ours even.
Discussion?
I think just anytime you have, you know, a study like this is gonna be beneficial to the town to determine the process, anytime that you're gonna change the structure of something, you have to beware of the unintended consequence and, and understand going, going into it, why, you know, eyes wide open, and that's not a knee-jerk reaction, this is something we've been talking about for a few years, this, you know, the changing of personnel here has kind of brought it a little bit more to the forefront, but anytime that you have any kind of change in in the organization of, of an organization, it should be done deliberately with study and facts, so I think this is a great step to do.
Yeah, I think what might have worked fifty-one years ago doesn't work anymore.
Right.
There's no discussion, I, Mr. Mogul said it perfect.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I will second the motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, the next thing, we have a invoice from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, uh, for their services rendered with, for the fiscal twenty community block grant, uh, this is the engineering and design of Northlake Avenue housing rehabilitation program for, uh, uh, Southwick and Granville and our community, uh, food pantry, Southwick, Granville, and Tallinn, the amount is six thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents.
Right, Mr. Chairman, this is the same, uh, grant in location that relates to the, an earlier vote you had taken on a recommendation by the D.P.W. Director to award a design contract to pair, pair engineering. So that you, that vote you took at a previous meeting and you just signed the contract recently. So this is all related to doing those improvements for infrastructure through federal pass-through monies.
Okay. Discussion or motion?
So moved.
Seconded, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, and let's. We sign in mine?
Yeah.
Okay, and we need to read signature, so we'll get sign mine. Yeah. Robin. All right, next up is the discussion of the twenty-twenty-two Johnson to Johnson opiate abatement payment election option, um, uh, they need to know by October tenth, so we have to make the decision tonight. Uh, if you've read through it, it's basically whether we want the lump sum of four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars or we want to take four equal installments. Um, this is one of numerous lawsuits that's being settled. Uh, and we'll probably have other companies that'll be will be advised about in, in the future.
Right, there's several, several law firms, Mr. Chairman, that are, you know, doing their distributions for, related to this case, and this just happens to be one of them that are giving communities a choice upfront, and right now, there is no legal mechanism to put it in a, uh, revolving fund, a receipt, receipts reserve for appropriation fund, a grant fund, it just, as the auditor has indicated to us, it just goes into the general fund for that.
All right, so it'd be easier for accounting and everybody if we just take the lump sum. Discussion?
Motion?
So moved.
Wow, seconded.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we're taking lump sum payment.
Mr. Steiner?
Yes.
That money, I think I read in the attachment, that that money actually goes direct to the general fund. Can we at a future town meeting allocate that money for its, for an intended purpose?
Um, that specific dollars you could not, because it will just close out at the end of the year to a fund balance, because the budget for the year has already been set.
So maybe, and, and add a special, sorry?
No, that wouldn't matter either.
Okay.
If this, if the legislature were to create a law that allows these funds that have been received to be, um, earmarked and used for sp- specific purposes, then we'd have to go through some other accounting functions, but those laws have not been, uh, adopted by the Commonwealth.
Well, I just would like to have a discussion maybe during the budget hearing then next year, um, because that'll close out of free cash, right?
Right, but that free cash is not the free cash that's gonna be certified as of this June thirtieth, which is used for fiscal year twenty-four, that won't be available till fiscal year twenty-five.
I'd rather, I'd like to see that funds put with some purpose back to, um, either treatment or care.
And you're correct, and that's why the, the.
Police department.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
There's the people that are gonna be.
Right.
Correct, the best.
If you need Narcan or anything like that, the money's available.
Correct.
Uh, so I, I, we're all in agreement with that, but legally, we can't do anything.
I get it, I just, it's like other.
I, I think there will be pressure put on the, the state legislature by the larger communities and urban areas to, um, have them put something in place. Um, and, you know, in the terms of law changes, but as you can see from your auditor's information, that's just not in place now.
Okay.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Steiner.
All right, the next thing I have is a vote to accept a gift in the amount of eight hundred twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents from the Southwick Lions Club for a bench at the Town Common.
I'll make the motion for that.
Second.
I'll gladly second that motion with our thanks to the Lions.
Okay, um, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
And Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, and Robin, can we send a nice thank you note to the Lions for that generous gift? Okay. We're going on to new business, Mr. Steinhardt, new business?
Um, the, um, the bids for the H.V.A.C. contract for the town hall have been received, we got three electrical sub bids, one of them was good, um, in terms of being favorable, but the overall G.C. contract, we only got two of those. So the H.V.A.C. engineer, the architect, and, uh, the clerk of the works are discussing about whether or not really we may want to take the, uh, some time and rebid that, um, H.V.A.C. project again, uh, because we'll have some time, the other issue that we're also dealing with is the, uh, the Santa Phil roof, that gray rolled roofing. Um, the material isn't due to be manufactured till, uh, a month or two from now, so that's obviously influencing our start date on the roofing project, like all projects, uh, that are being, you know, uh, built, you know, we're just behind in terms of, uh, when they're putting out the product and the raw materials to use. And I can ima- I can imagine what happened down south is gonna be another burden on large construction firms and materials producing suppliers.
Right, you're right. All right, any other?
Places that need A.C. year-round.
Uh, any other new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, no, sir.
Smoglin?
Uh, the only thing I have is, uh, October twenty-ninth, Sunday, uh, Historical Society is having their, uh, annual cemetery walk, and I don't think we've talked it up enough, and it's coming up, and we're missing a meeting next week, so that's all I've got.
Okay, and that's a good time had by all, are you gonna be performing again this year?
I've been, I've been asked, I believe I'll be in town, so yes.
All right. Okay, well, that's a good announcement, why don't we carry that, uh, uh, under old business so we can promote that, because, you know, they, they put a lot of effort into it, and we want to make sure that, uh, uh, people are aware of it. All right, Jason.
I have nothing new this.
Okay. All right, the only thing I had is, um, and I know, I'm gonna bring it up under new business, because the, um, Historical Commission, I believe, is meeting tonight at seven o'clock across the hall, and we have the report here from, uh, Art Law concerning the police roof in Cupola at the old fire station, and, uh, we need to get a recommendation for them so that we can submit the application to Community Preservation, uh, soon as possible, so, um, if you gentlemen don't mind, uh, seven o'clock, we'll see if we can't walk this over there and, uh, see if they can't take, uh, review it and make their recommendation, uh, so we can proceed with it.
Need a motion?
Um, no, I don't think we need a motion, I think it's F.Y.I., you know, we're just asking them to, to, um, get, make sure that they take care of this so that we can get that application in there.
I thought the lieutenant usually has to paint the poop.
Well, if he paints as good as he cooks hamburgers.
Whoa, wow, how everybody's getting zinged tonight.
Is he on?
Oh, he was. Is, are you making that in the form of a motion, Mr. Mogul?
No, I won't, because I'll get pulled over every five.
All right, just, just checking.
We, we know he won't be asked to paint the building, because he wasn't in the class of seventy-five.
Them guys are too old to be painting.
All right, all right, enough of this, enough of this, okay, we're going on to, oh, old business. Uh, north time, uh, violations and meetings with Fish and Game, uh, we got, uh, I saw an email today from Chief Landis that, uh, uh, Fish and Game asked that any incidents be, uh, sent over to them so they could keep a, a tab on what's going on, and, um, they're, they're concerned about some of the things, and um, I'm sure it's one of our follow-up meetings that we'll be discussing, uh, uh, different things that can take place, so, um, either this, later this fall, or certainly for next spring. Uh, he's already, Carl's already talked about the HVAC design work, uh, I, I guess some of the bids came in a little bit high. Uh, the sewer I.M.A., I think I told you, and Randy told us, uh, last time, we had our initial first meeting, uh, it was really the lawyers going over language and, and some of the, uh, details, uh, so, our next meeting, Carl, do you remember when the next meeting is?
I believe it's, it's like in two weeks.
Right, it's in the middle of October, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's somewhere in two weeks, they're, they're just looking over the, all the different changes, um, for updating the language and the provisions, and then, and then we'll be able to, um, you know, agree upon most of those issues, and then whatever the remaining issues are, we might have to then have a subsequent meeting.
Okay, uh, I just should have looked at my phone first, it's, uh, Thursday, the twentieth, uh, eleven A.M.
Yep.
All right, uh, Mr. Mogul, have you been working with town council on that Warren article?
Yep.
Okay, uh, right now, it looks like everything's been submitted to the state as far as the, uh, TIF that, uh, with Walley Computer Associates, so, uh, we have a, well, it's, I think it's more than tentative now, I'd like to recommend to the board that we have the special town meeting on November fifteenth, it's a Tuesday, at the Southwick Regional, uh, the room to be determined. Discussion, motion?
Carl, should I not even act on the motion?
Well, yeah, you should recuse yourself from all, any and all actions and considerations thereof.
I will make the motion.
Okay, I was, I was, I will second it, uh, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Doug Mogul abstain.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mogul, I wasn't thinking about that.
Yeah, I don't think it matters for that, but for, because there'll be other article, that other article should be on there anyway, well.
Okay, so we're gonna be set with that. Um, okay, uh, we're still reviewing the, uh, Planning Board Comprehensive Impact Statement Handbook?
Yeah, they're meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, uh, town council, uh, when he reviewed the open meeting law complaint, uh, Ms. Simone, um, he, he, when he listened to the tape, things were garbled, people were talking over one another, even though it was on the agenda, and I think the intent was clear, but, uh, just to make town council happy, I'm asking to reaffirm the vote of Jack Cody to the Economic Development Commission, uh, of, uh, August eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm.
I would like to just, just quick discussion on this, um, I was made aware that there was an additional, uh, some, uh, interest in this position?
There, there was an, uh, I, email sent after the posting.
Okay.
Okay, and the email, and I followed up the discussion with that individual, there was, it, the way it was written, it could be interpreted in different ways, okay, but I've had a discussion with that individual, I also told that individual, I've reached out to, uh, town council, because we have a full five-member board to see if we can appoint alternate members.
That's.
But that individual is attending the meetings on a regular basis and, and, uh, inputting.
Yep.
But that.
That was my only question, because that, that brought to my attention, and someone had talked about the alternate, um, position, and just wanted to see if that was something we're looking to.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
So we got a motion?
I will make the motion.
Uh, no, we got a motion.
Oh, we, I'm sorry, I will second the motion.
All right, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. All right, uh, then the marijuana.
You need to amend your minutes from that meeting, too.
Is, did town council suggesting that, Carl?
No, but it was something Robin and I looked at, because if it was reflected in, you know, that, um, that it was your intent to have that person, you should at least have something in your eight-eight minutes that clarifies the original issue.
I make a motion to table that till our next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to table to our next meeting, a roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right, and the marijuana thing, that's just, uh, to keep under old business. All right, old business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, nothing this evening, sir.
Mogul?
No, I'm gonna, we're gonna get this done in half an hour, I'm not gonna stand in your way.
I'm only gonna stand in your way for momentarily.
Okay.
When regards to Mr. Gale's question at the meeting last week, I spoke to Jim Middleton, um, of course, I can now forget how to get there, but apparently on our website, there is a ability to click off on each individual board and commission, and you can be updated via email, I don't believe every board right now posts, um, their schedule, Jim said that to do that would be very time-consuming, um, but I'm gonna suggest that maybe we say the other boards and commissions that when they do know they're going to have a meeting, maybe they put out an email, so that people that want to know and this situation will be addressed, people can, they'll be notified, and, you know, maybe we can somehow announce that in a little, some more public manner, so people are more aware, I know that was the biggest concern, people aren't aware of, uh, the ability, and I wasn't even aware that you could do this, you know, Jim showed me this, uh, earlier this week, and I'm like, oh, that's convenient.
Yeah.
Uh, then that should address people, that should address the issue, that's, in my opinion, I think that should be sufficient enough to address the issue, um, as long as we just let people know that, that they have that option to do that.
Educate.
Yes.
Smoglin? No problem. Uh, you were looking for some sort of color coding?
Well, I understand, I thought about it after the meeting as well, I think the idea is fantastic, that's, the implementation is gonna be funny, because I don't know how, like, the Select Board meets every Monday, or we, we publish the schedule three months out. Perhaps we could somehow put those on the, the calendar as gray or something, and then when the agenda's posted, that's when the notifications actually go out, the Planning Board meets every other Tuesday, they're publishing a schedule. Uh, that's, I, that's, I think what, um, Mr. Gale was getting at, um, you know, and certain boards meet the first and third Wednesday or Thursday, and you could have those on the, the calendar, they're not official meeting notices, but for planning purposes, you could look two months out and see if they're going to meet. But I, I understand the difficulty in doing, and that's, I alluded to that during the meeting, like, the, the Planning Board has their schedule on the website, but I think it's a lot of work to make someone go to the Select Board page, and the Board of Health page, and the Planning Board page, to figure out who's meeting, to try to, now you gotta piece through your own calendar, I, I still think there's gotta be a way, and I'll, I don't know, I don't know how, but there should be a way to kind of amalgamate all that onto a calendar, maybe. I don't know, I don't know how, but there should be a way to kind of amalgamate all that onto a calendar. Maybe it's even a separate calendar. Than the official, quote-unquote, official one on the town website, which has all the meeting minutes.
And bring that back, because I asked if there was a way we could. You know, similar to the, not really the red alerts, but like a banner, you know, how so that basically ticker.
Hmm.
Type thing, something where it's, it's there and it's easy to see, and it's right on the front page, but.
You wanna keep working on that?
Absolutely.
All right. We'll keep working on that one, because, you know, there, there's gotta be a way. There's gotta be a way. Um. All right, then I am not going to discuss any old business tonight, because we are going into executive session, not to reconvene. And then our next meeting will not be until seventeen. And that'll be an interesting one, because we're gonna be meeting with EverSource. So hopefully, uh. We'll get a, uh, good, uh, cross-section of people zooming in or people attending. All right, so we're going into executive session, not to reconvene. A motion to go in executive session, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter C, thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, two and three. And Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, litigation matters and strategy, collective bargaining, police union clerk. Union town clerk treasurer, Ms. Hill, and assistant administrative. Officer position, executive session regarding Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, and. Section two, move to go in executive session, collective bargaining. Session with non-union personnel not to reconvene. Move to go into executive, conduct negotiation for non-union personnel and to not to reconvene in open session. Clearly, open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of body and to not to reconvene in open session. Move to go in the executive session, discuss strategy, respect, collect borrowing, and chair move. To go into executive session, conduct strategy sessions and preparation negotiations for non-union personnel and to not to reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session, discuss strategy, respect the litigation that the chair declared, then open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the litigation positions of body and to not to reconvene in open session. Regarding Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial serious interference with their. Privacy, the superior court shall jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and connection therewith to award damage. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Moblen, I.
And Jason Peron, I.
All right, good night.